All right, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Orange County Legislature meeting dated Thursday, July 7. At this point, I would like to call the meeting to order, and I would ask that you all silence your cell phones and electronic devices, and I would ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence as we pledge the flag and remember former Deputy Health Commissioner Chris Dunleavy and former legislator Patrick Baradnelli, both recently who passed away. Afterwards, I would ask that you please remain standing for the National Anthem sung today by Monroe Woodbury student Joseph Guerrero and a presentation by legislator Toohey to Mr. Guerrero. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Praise God. Justice.
It's my privilege and honor to welcome up Joe Guerrero. Come on up, Joe. Joe's a sophomore going into junior year at Monroe Woodbury, and he also sang the National Anthem at the Monroe Memorial Day festivities and did a wonderful job. And I just heard today that he sang for the Warwick Wascals, a senior softball league on July 4th, this past Monday, and our very own Barry Chaney is a player in that league. So this is great. We appreciate it. And here you go.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? All the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, doth that so-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave!
That was absolutely beautiful, wonderful job. And on behalf of the Orange County Legislature, we have a certificate here for you. I'll just read it real quick. Certificate of appreciation of the county, of the Orange County Legislature presented to Joseph Guerrero for your outstanding performance of the National Anthem at the Orange County Legislative Session on July 7, 2022, signed by Katie Benelli, Chairwoman, Orange County Legislature, 5th District, and all of Katie's colleagues here in the chamber. Thank you so much, Joe.
Thank you.
And I think there's some ice cream waiting for you in the back.
Joseph, thank you very, very much, and thank you to your mom making sure you were here on time. We appreciate it. And legislator Toohey, who brought Joseph's talents to our attention. At this point, I would ask for a roll call, please. Fagio.
Here.
Paduk.
Here.
Aimo.
Here.
Anagastakis.
Present.
Ben.
Breschah.
Here.
Chaney.
Here.
Ellers.
Present.
Heinz.
Here.
Luhon.
Present.
Menuda.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Ramos.
Ryskevich.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Sierra.
Stiganga.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Tortell.
Toohey.
Here.
Benelli. Seventeen present and four absent.
Thank you very much. At this point, I would call upon legislator Paul Ryskevich to, for a special presentation with Cornell Cooperative Extension in celebration of National Ice Cream Month. And as recognition for the nice little treats you provided us for today, we have a little certificate and thank you for you. And I know you have a special announcement for the community as well.
Right, so, everybody.
Hold on a second. We're going to give you a mic so we can hear you properly.
I thought I was loud enough.
Thanks, Mary.
So, thank you all, and we're going to have an Orange County Ice Cream Trail so that you can hop from one ice cream stand to the other. At least make sure you've hit all the ones in the county and all of their special treats. Many of them make their own ice cream. Many of them feature our local agricultural products. And many of you know July is National Ice Cream Month, signed in 1984 by President Reagan. And so, we're not quite to actual National Ice Cream Day. There's one of those, too, where I heard you're allowed to have it for breakfast. So, we have the trail. It will be available on the Orange County Tourism website, and if anybody has an ice cream stand, contact me, and I can make sure you get the survey to get on here. It's easy to change and add, and now I'll give.
Okay, Mary, thank you. I know I'm going to definitely try to get to all of those and probably a few more, not all in one day, but I'll get there. But no, I just want to present you with a certificate in recognition of National Dairy Month. I know last month, June, was national, or was Dairy Month, so we celebrated that, and now it was National Ice Cream Month, so I want to encourage everybody to get out and support our local ice cream stands and, of course, our dairy industry as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to Orange County Tourism for being so cooperative about hosting the site and helping out with a bunch of stuff.
Thank you very, very much. We appreciate your being here today. Thank you, Paul. Majority Leader Fagio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes of February 3, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Right.
Paul does double duty around here. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. All right, let's start our agenda, and we have first on our agenda, item number A-1. Chairwoman Benelli, resolution of the Legislature of the County of Orange honoring the memory of Patrick J. Baradnelli, Sr., outstanding citizen, dedicated public servant, and former county legislator of the 6th Legislative District.
Second.
And I would call upon, at this time, legislator Aimo to read that particular resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This is important to me. I served 10 years with Pat on many committees and knew him very well, I thought, and I got along. We talked an awful lot about the mental health issues. His son was involved heavily with the president, when I was the president of Mental Health Association on the board, and he was involved in a lot of things. He was a special guy. Liked him a lot. So, it's an honor that I read this. Whereas it's fitting and appropriate to recognize the career and life of an outstanding citizen, dedicated public servant, and respected friend and colleague on this at the first regular meeting of the Orange County Legislature after his passing. And whereas Patrick J. Baradnelli, Sr. established a prominent and admired place in the local and county community, he epitomized the fundamental values upon which our nation is founded and set an example to which all persons may aspire. The life of Patrick J. Baradnelli, Jr. demonstrated that love of service and love of and service to his country, family, community, and a personal conviction to work hard and strive for excellence are key to a life of fulfillment. Whereas Patrick J. Baradnelli, Sr. influenced very important, every important public policy decision made during the outstanding career. During his tenure, he served on chair, on honor and chair of numerous legislative activities, including Health and Mental Health, Personal Personnel and Compensation, Ways and Means, Education and Economic Development, Human Services, Rules, Enactment and Governmental Relations, and Physical Services Committee. His commitment and service to our county is deeply appreciated. Whereas though his job at IBM, through his job at IBM as Director of Global Operations, Patrick had the opportunity to travel the world. Patrick was a member of the National Guard, retiring as a Staff Sergeant, and a member of the Catholic War Veterans. After retiring from IBM, Patrick followed his love for community and entered public service, first becoming a Newburgh City Councilman and later an Orange County legislator. He was a lifelong outdoorsman, competed in darts with teams of St. Francis Church in Newburgh, even won Man of the Year. Patrick loved golf, was a member of various county club clubs, numerous golf courses. Patrick was a devout Catholic and a lifelong parishioner of St. Francis Church in Newburgh, where he taught CCD classes and participated in Bible study and prayer groups. He was a lover of history, books, film, good food, playing cards, spending time with his family, and participating in his community. Thereby, now therefore, it is hereby resolved that we, the Orange County Legislature, the County of Orange County Legislature, do hereby formally memorialize our profound sentiments on the occasion of the passing of Patrick J. Baradnelli, on behalf of ourselves and all the people of the County of Orange, to his interest in service he so was so dedicated to. And further, it be resolved that this resolution, resolution be spread upon the records of this body as a permanent memorial and an enduring standard for its member and for all citizens.
Thank you, legislator Aimo. Are there any other comments? And please, legislator O'Donnell.
Sure, thank you, Chairwoman. So, Pat, I first met when I was the Deputy County Exec, and I could speak at length how such a great guy he was. But I know many of you will find it hard to believe, we actually got a great relationship between me and the legislature back then, with Pat Baradnelli leading the way. He was wonderful to work with, and he was a gem. He knew his business, he studied the issues, and he's going to be missed by the entire community. Thank you.
Well said, legislator O'Donnell. Legislator Breschah.
Thank you. I, too, would like to say how much Pat will be missed in this, in this chamber, even though he never sat in this chamber. He and I came in together in the class of '94, as did Rob Sassy, and we sat together for eight years, then he was gone for four, and he came back and we got to sit next to each other for another four. And he was always distinguished, professional, knowledgeable. We had many conversations sitting next to each other, as do other legislators, with the legislators that sit next to them. And he was a true friend, had so much knowledge in legislative matters in a multitude of areas, and I personally will miss him as I, as so many others will.
Thank you very much, legislator Breschah. Anyone else? Roll call, please. Fagio.
Yes.
Paduk.
Yes.
Aimo, Anagastakis, Breschah, Chaney, Ellers, Heinz, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ryskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Toohey, Benelli. Seventeen eyes. Number one. Legislators Benton, Breschah, Paduk, and legislator Luhon is a cosponsor. Resolution of the Legislature of the County of Orange electing a cents per gallon rate of sales and compensating use taxes on motor vehicle, I'm sorry, motor fuel and diesel motor fuel in lieu of the percentage rate of such taxes pursuant to authority of Article 29 of the tax law of the state of New York.
Second.
Questions or comments? Legislator Luhon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to say that it is, is so great to see that this is, that this is, this motion is coming to the floor, because, you know, we saw something very similar in Dutchess County. We saw something very similar in Ulster County. I was very happy to be able to propose this bill or form of it back in March, and, you know, the reality is so many people across our county are struggling, and we all know that. And it's not about what's going on in Washington, D.C. It's not about what's going on in Albany. It's not going on, what's going on here. It's about what's hurting people's pocketbooks, what people are facing every single day. We have a responsibility as leaders to, to do everything that we can to support those members, and so if we can help them in any way, reduce costs, we should do so. I'm really happy that we, that this is here. I hope that every single legislator will support it. I'm happy that the county executive has come out and supported it now. I know that there was, there seemed to be disagreement about that before, but I hope that every single legislator here will support this, this resolution and help the families and the working families of Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you very much, legislator Luhon. And yes, in fact, legislator Luhon was actually probably the first person that brought that to my attention back in the end of the spring, or the beginning of springtime. So, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and I also want to thank Vette Abraham, who was immediately, both of you immediately reached, you know, were helping with information. Our caucus also, we worked together to try to push this forward, and I'm just, as a, as a body, I think that this is the right thing. So, thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Minority Leader Paduk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to do, thank Kevin. Four months ago, we brought this up, and it seemed like the county executive office told us that he wanted nothing to do with it. Now, four months later, they bring it back. The plan is really, how do you enforce that we make sure that people get these savings? We don't. We can't. It's like an impossible task. However, I think there'll be put forth an effort, and once again, I want to thank Kevin for bringing it up four months ago, and if it took an extra four months, so be it, I guess, but helping people in Orange County is what we're here to do, and I fully support it now, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Legislator O'Donnell.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So, since the Ways and Means Committee, it was stated that the cost of this was going to be between $2 and $3 million. So, I'm assuming that's what everybody has in their head as far as why they're voting, and it's between $2 and $3 million. We have all this sales tax money and money from Washington, so we're flush with money. And of course, we want to help Orange County residents, all right? This particular bill helps non-Orange County residents as well, which is why I'm going to be voting no. But do we have any new information on the actual cost of this resolution?
I personally do not have any new information, and I'm seeing a head shaking in the back of the room from our budget director, and I do know that we do have present the county attorney as well as budget and finance, and it doesn't appear that they have anything else to add, and if you do, please feel free to come up to the microphone. Oh, I didn't see you. I did not see the deputy county executive. Harry, you were kind of louched down there in the back.
Be discreet.
There you are.
The numbers that we gave out earlier were $2.5 million to $3 million. That's the same number that we're dealing with right now. It's our best estimate of what the impact will be.
Thank you. Legislator Luhon. I'm sorry, were you finished?
I'll wait.
Okay.
I was not going to take long anyways. Just wanted to reiterate once again that prior to, to us voting for it back in March, both Ulster County and Dutchess County both supported this resolution in bipartisan. It impacts, it allows anyone, whether you're an Orange County resident, a Dutchess County resident, an Ulster County resident, it supports anyone who works in those regions. So, it is really something that we, as a Hudson Valley, supporting one another, it sends the right message to our community members. And so, I just want to emphasize that in Dutchess, it's a bipartisan resolution. It was passed by a Republican county executive. In Ulster, it was very much the same, and, and again, you know, this is, this is just for all of our families, that are, that so many people from all over are currently struggling. So, to your point, my, Mr. O'Donnell, I totally recognize what you're saying. Everyone here is, our communities are all struggling.
Wait till you hear the numbers.
All right, thank you. I'm still supportive.
Okay.
Legislator O'Donnell.
Thank you. So, actually, I did a little research on exactly how much this is going to cost us. I spoke to Kelly Esq., asked her how many vehicles were registered in Orange County, and the number is 294,796. That includes snowmobiles and boats, anything that uses gas, all right? So, if you take that number, all right, and you use 15,000 miles an average for a car per year, all right, so you're looking at four months of what we're giving the taxpayers a break on. That would be 5,000 miles, one-third, four months. You multiply the 5,000 miles times the 294,000 and change vehicles, right, it comes to 1,473,980,000 miles, all right? You divide that by 20 miles per gallon, you get 73,699,000 gallons of gas that basically is going to be bought during those four months, all right? That equals when we give them, we're giving each citizen 11 and 1/4 cents, all right? This is just Orange County residents. That number equals 8,291,137 dollars and 50 cents, right? That's just Orange County residents. What is proposed today is we also include non-Orange County residents. Your taxpayer money going to non-Orange County people coming through. I did a rather unscientific poll today. I was coming back from a funeral in Boston. I stopped by the Maybrook Truck Center. Eighty trucks, tractor trailers, each one of those tractor trailers has two fuel tanks, between 50 and 100 gallons in each fuel tank. I'll do the minimum. So, if each of those 80, and also, out of the 80 tractor trailers, only three had New York plates. I doubt they were Orange County. So, that's where all the out-of-state truck, this is just one place, one moment in time, 11:30 this morning. So, just if they filled up with 100 gallons at this truck stop, that would be $900. That's just today. That Orange County taxpayers are giving a tax break to non-Orange County residents that just coming through. One point in time, one day. Now, you multiply that times 122 days, because that's how long this bill and gift to non-county residents goes, it equals 109,000 and change, and that's if it's just the minimum 100 gallons. Now, I'm all for giving back your money to you, all right? But you want to do that? Our first responsibility as legislators is public safety. Second responsibility is fiduciary, which is what we're talking about today. But public safety, I have a proposal for school safety. I won't go into it. I'll visit you, legislator Heinz. We need more dispatches for 311. I talked to Darcy Miller today, but that costs money, right? We need an investigation into the deaths at Valley View. That costs money. That benefits all of our Orange County residents. This particular resolution benefits, if it was just Orange County residents, I'd be fine with it, but I'm not going to spend your money on non-county residents. It's not fair to you. You worked long and hard for your money, all right? You suffered during the pandemic. You survived. There's no reason your hard-earned money should go to non-county residents. So, I'll leave, yield the floor for now. Thank you.
Legislator Agostakis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, where to start? Obviously, what's been...
Beginning. Let's go. Beginning.
Obviously, what's been said here is correct from both sides. Every legislator wants to try to give back to the citizens their hard-earned tax dollars. But the key is what Mr. O'Donnell said, giving it back to our citizens, not others. I've never, this is, in my opinion, reactionary legislation, the worst kind of legislation that we could possibly have. I don't know who thought of this four months ago. All I know is that this came before the Ways and Means Committee last Tuesday was debated for 20 or 30 minutes. That's it. Was passed by a razor-thin vote to get to the floor to pass today, and we were told we have to do it right away. It's no, very little information. Nobody can tell any of us anything and be precise about it. The county cannot tell us how many gallons of gas gets sold in Orange County. Nobody knows what that number is. It is a number that is impossible to know. We don't know how many will be sold during this four-month period. We don't know who is buying the gas. We don't know where those people are located. We could probably find out, but we don't know how many gas stations there are. I don't know what the penalties are if a gas station doesn't implement this. Jesus, if I were an unscrupulous owner, and I were going to get slapped by probably a minimum $100 to $200 fine, I'd make that up within an hour or two of sales at a busy station. I would take my chances to continue to skirt the law. So, what is it going to be? Is it going to be three, $2.5 million or $3 million? Is it going to be $9 million? Nobody knows. But what I think, I'm pretty sure, this is my guess, as good a guess as anybody else, it will be probably a third going to our citizens, it will be probably a third going to truckers and out-of-county people, and it probably will be a third of going to unscrupulous gas owners. What I do know is those gas owners will pocket thousands of dollars. The truckers from out of county will pocket hundreds of dollars, and based on the numbers I heard here, 294,000 and an estimate of $2.5 million, our vehicle drivers will pocket something less than $10, okay? So, I don't want to give thousands away to gas owners. I don't want to give hundreds away to truckers out of state, and I don't want to only give 10 to our people. Want to give tax relief to people? It's a simple solution. Find out how much money you have at the end of this period, calculate it, find out who those 294,000 owners are, and send them a check for $50 or $80, whatever that number calculates to. That's how you do it the right way. You don't rush reactionary legislation. I will not be voting for this.
Legislator Ryskevich.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Yeah, I don't disagree with anything said here today. However, I would like to point out that on the other side of the coin there, we do generate quite a bit of sales tax from non-residents, and we also generate a lot of hotel tax from non-residents. I don't know what that number is, but I'm sure it's pretty big. So, it's not, it's not our only tax revenue. I understand wanting to, you know, be specific, helping out our, our residents, but I think this is something meant to help out the general public, those who live here or visit here and work here. So, I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, legislator Ryskevich. Legislator Aimo.
I really support what Paul just said, because I thought I was going to address the sales tax component. I think we have to factor that into the calculus. Anybody that buys gas, even the truckers that Mr. O'Donnell spoke about, probably was in that particular area, buying coffee, buying food, buying a shirt, buying a hat, we don't know, but they're spending money. And so, I think there is a connection between when people drive into, drive, their cars, they're going to spend money, other money that we're going to benefit from. And I think, so, I don't think we need to be that parochial about it, because these are unusual times when, when you have bright gas prices at this price. I just took a vacation and, and drove across the country, well, actually halfway to Colorado, and back in an RV, and I was, gas prices were $550, $5.50 a gallon in Oklahoma and Nebraska, and you're just paying that kind of money. And when I got back, my ticket was $1,400 in gas to drive. So, it's an unusual time, especially some of my age, growing up, when you get gas at $25 and $0.50 a gallon. We all know that. Those days are gone, but, you know, it's an unusual time, unusual time. So, I'm going to support it.
Thank you, legislator Aimo. Legislator Sassy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, like Mike Aimo, I've struggled with this, and I think that any, you know, to lower a tax or get rid of a tax is a great thing, certainly as a Republican. However, as well-intentioned as this is, and to let the record reflect, as legislator Anagastakis had mentioned, this came to us roughly two weeks ago to Ways and Means, and it did not come with any clear details, which to this day are unclear. Mr. O'Donnell, legislator O'Donnell has presented some statistics here, and again, I don't know the accuracy of those. I don't know the accuracy of the ones that were presented by the county executive's office. And again, everything is well-intentioned, but it's almost like we're being, you know, like Nancy Pelosi, I remember in a famous phrase, said, "Well, we have to vote for it first, and then we'll figure out what's in it later." Well, how's that worked out in Washington? So, again, as well-intentioned as this is, and I think it's great, and legislator O'Donnell gives a compelling... gives a compelling argument, is this really going to end up in the hands of our taxpayers, especially our contractors, our hard-working men and women, whether they're plumbers or roofers, contractors, or trucks are on the road every single day? Or is it going to go to those 80 tractor trailers? Just one in the town of Montgomery? You didn't go to the other one? The pilot one there as well is even busier. So there's really no clear details here that scare me. The gas tax holiday, and the question I ask, can someone answer? Mr. Porter, you're still here?
Yes.
How specifically does this address a supply shortage in our country?
I can answer that question.
Thank you. It's a tough one, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but we have a supply shortage, not because of the Orange County Legislature, not because of the sales tax, but because of policies coming out of Washington, DC. Plain and simple. We were an energy-independent nation, and now have a president who has verbally said, "I will dismantle the fossil fuel industry," and that's exactly what he's doing, and you and I, ladies and gentlemen, are paying for it at the pump, unfortunately. So when you look at that, it doesn't address supply. A chief economist at Moody's recently, I heard on the radio, "Tax holidays are not helpful and may, in fact, even be counterproductive, be inflationary." Here's why. People will think, oh, and again, it's gone down, a couple of pennies is not going to matter for most people. No one stopped driving. California's $10 a gallon, so 9.99, 9.89. But what bothers me too are the energy companies. They can raise as much as they want. So even if we reduce it a few cents, which is great, and again, I'm all in favor of lowering taxes, what's to stop them, say, "Great, you know what? We still have a supply issue. We're going to raise it anyway." So the Moody's economist, I think, was spot on, and it's Economics 101, it's supply and demand. On a federal, state, and local level, we use sales tax revenue for our roads. Has anybody been on state roads lately? Exactly. They're horrible. Go from here to Warwick. I mean, how much is it going to cost to get, you know, alignment or a tire replaced? It's unbelievable. So we're kicking the can down the road, in my opinion, because you know what? We're going to, we're going to, we want to pass this, that's fine, but on December 31st, it's going to expire, and that tax is going to snap back on, the state tax and the local tax, and everybody's going to have sticker shock again. And where's the crystal ball? Do we know that oil prices are going down? The war in the Ukraine is going to end, and world markets are going to stabilize? I'm very, very leery. I want to give taxpayers a break, but maybe that break belongs, that extra money belongs over at Valley View. Maybe it belongs in the supermarket. Maybe it belongs in giving people a clothing, a break on the sales tax for clothing for a longer length of time, or in the supermarket, not truckers and others that are coming in. I really struggled with this. And again, I'm all in favor of tax cuts, but I think this is kicking the can down the road with unproven and just, it's a big question mark. We just don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Legislator Sassi. Legislator Menuda, I believe you had your hand up.
Thank you, Chairwoman. A lot of the items have been addressed here. I'm not going to belabor it. We have quick legislation from the state, which has rushed this, which everything comes from the state, is rushed or mandated, so we don't really have a lot of time for it. We looked at this several months ago. I agree with just about everything that was said from all sides of this. There are better ways to do this, but this is what we have in our hand now. Given all of the items that we could be doing or can do in the future, this is the best that we have the ability to do and be under the regulations of New York State for this tax reduction during this period of time. So based on all that, we can sit there and bean count and silo effect, but the fact of the matter is, we're not just, this is just one revenue stream for the county. There are many, many other revenue streams, and this might actually increase some of the tourism and other things within our county. So there's those things to look at, which are kind of intangible, and of course, we can't do the mathematics on it at this time, or even possibly in the future. We'll know when we know. So I'm in favor of this today, and I'm going to be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Legislator Menuda. Majority Leader Fagion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The vote on this resolution today is pretty cut and dry. A yes vote on this resolution supports a tax cut for Orange County consumers, including many, many Orange County residents. Let me say that again. A yes vote here today says that you support a tax cut at the pump for Orange County consumers. This isn't about giving back. This is about not taking. A no vote today puts you on the record as saying that you don't support a tax break here in Orange County. That's right. A no vote today says that you do not support a tax break here in Orange County. A yes vote, quote, "gives families just a little bit of relief." A yes vote gives them, quote, "a little bit of breathing room." Is this the solution to the global problem, the national problem? Heck, no. But it's the one option that the state has given the counties an option. That option is here in front of us today. I am voting yes, and I'm supporting the tax cut at the pump for Orange County consumers. All here who vote no will be on the record supporting taxes over people. I ask my colleagues to put people before taxes and keep the money where it belongs, in the hands of the hard-working people who have earned it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
At this point, I'll take one more comment, if there's any. Legislator O'Donnell, you've already spoke, but I'll be a little lenient here and let you finish up, because-
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We've now gone on.
Especially after the comments from Legislature Fagion.
Okay, let's not get personal. Let's stay to the focus.
He was pretty specific on what a no vote meant, so I'm saying, what a no vote means for me is, I talked to Nick DeSantis, he's our auditor, all right? Spoke to him earlier today, asking him, because someone told me that this was going to affect our bond rating. I just wanted to make sure it didn't affect our bond rating, because that's how much interest we pay on the money we borrow. All right? So it has absolutely no effect on our bond rating. But I told him what was planned with the gasoline tax break that we're about to vote on, which is going to pass, just so you know. It's going to pass. All right? So his advice was, why don't you do what you did when you passed the budget and give everybody a property tax break? Because that would be, everybody in Orange County would not affect anybody driving through the county. It would not affect the truck drivers or the people going to Legoland. The reason we put in a hotel tax was just that, so we could tax non-county residents and gain taxable income to give you a tax break on your property taxes. So what we're doing here today is giving non-residents a tax break. That's my only problem with this resolution. If it was just Orange County taxpayers, I would be a cosponsor. All right? We're not in the business of spending your money on non-county residents. Okay? That's just not what we're in the business for. Thank you.
Legislator Tui, I'm going to entertain a few more here.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Please make it brief, and I know you haven't spoken yet, so.
No, I'll be brief. I'm going to vote yes today on this, but I'm certainly open to future discussions on property tax breaks. Thank you.
Very well said, sir. Agostakis, last time. Let's go.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to clarify what my no vote stands for.
Okay.
My no vote is giving away our tax dollars to out-of-county people. I am all in favor, as I proposed, giving all of that money back to every owner of a vehicle in Orange County, or giving it back to every property owner. All in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Legislator Luhon, I'm being very liberal with all of you today. Go ahead.
Madam Chairwoman, I appreciate your time. Again, just very briefly, everyone, I think we all understand what's at stake here. We've had heated debate. At the end of the day, this is a bill that we have before us. We are all here, and we all love our community. We all love our citizens. Let's do what we can with this resolution to support the community members that we know are all struggling. We know people right now who are trying to go and, with different people, to be able to get to work, people who are struggling to pay their bills, pay their utilities. This has a little bit of support, and we have the responsibility to support our community members. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Legislator Breschow.
Yeah, I'll try to be quick, Madam Chair.
That's okay at this point.
Everybody's, some have spoken twice at length, so. This is not the best resolution that we could have, but it's certainly relief to Orange County residents at the pumps, and it's relief to residents of other counties and truckers of other counties. But is that really that criminal? I don't think so, because other counties have been doing this for months, and now we're coming into the game late. Okay? The last quarter, that's all we're talking about, is the last quarter. You have the residual effect, like Mike Emo said, these truckers that come in, they're spending money on burgers, hats, so on and so forth. That's tax money. How much tax money did we lose from truckers going to another county where gas was, and diesel was cheaper? And how much were we losing on residents of Orange County that went to Ulster, Dutchess, and other counties where gas is cheaper? I'll bet you we lost a lot. We could sit there and ask a thousand questions about this, but this is relief today, today, starting September till the end of the year, and it's going to gain us tax revenue, as Joe said, in other areas. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to end with just one comment for myself, and Legislator Breschow, you kind of hit the, "This is at the pump," and you said that. "This is to address the gas prices. Nothing more, nothing less." We have very many ways, and legislators have spoken, of giving back to the taxpayers when we have the opportunity to do so, and we have done it in the past, as Legislator O'Donnell pointed out. But Legislator Breschow, it's at the pump, and that's where we can help the people with gas prices. It's for the consumer, not a property taxpayer in Orange County. It is for the consumer that either lives here or comes here, spends their money on either hotels or even just passing through. So that's all I wanted to put into perspective, and at this point, I'm going to call the vote. And it is a roll call vote. Fagion.
Yes.
Paduk.
Yes.
Emo.
Yes.
Anagostakis.
No.
Breschow.
Yes.
Cheney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Luhon.
Aye.
Menuda.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
No.
Ryskevich.
Yes.
Sassi.
No.
Stiganga.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Tui.
Yes.
Benelli.
Yes.
14 ayes, 3 noes. Thank you all very much for a very good discussion, and I think we have some other work and some thoughts to look at as we move into budget time. All right, we move on to number two.
Legislators Benton, O'Donnell, Paduk, with Legislator Luhon as a cosponsor. Resolution authorizing previously transferred funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, as established by Resolution Number 27 of 2022, in the amount of $3,771,000, be used to create a new project by the Orange County Department of General Services IT for technology updates.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, let's call the roll. Fagion.
Yes.
Paduk.
Yes.
Emo.
Yes.
Anagostakis. Breschow. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Luhon. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ryskevich. Sassi. Stiganga. Sutherland. Tui. Benelli. 17 ayes. Okay, number three, please.
Legislators Benton, Hines, and Tortell. Resolution approving the release of the county's interest in, into a certain deed sale parcel to the previous owner of record pursuant to Section 5, Paragraph B1 of Local Law Number 2 of 2010.
Second.
Questions or comments? Let's call the roll, please. Fagion.
Yes.
Paduk.
Yes.
Emo. Anagostakis. Breschow. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Luhon. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ryskevich. Sassi. Stiganga. Sutherland. Tui. Benelli. 17 ayes. Number four, please.
Legislators Cheney and O'Donnell, with Legislator Luhon as a cosponsor. Bond resolution dated July 7, 2022. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing demolition of Transfer Station Number 2 in the town of Newburgh, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $3 million, appropriating said amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $3 million bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Questions or comments? Minority Leader Paduk.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just on the back of that resolution, can maybe our attorney give us a clarification? It says, "Such obligations are authorized in violation of the provisions of the Constitution." Tell me what that means before I vote.
I think that's a stand, I'm sorry, I'm not the attorney. I'll let her speak.
I cannot speak for Bond Counsel, who authored this resolution, but I believe that is standard template language that's placed in the bond resolutions that we regularly cast.
And the clerk can confirm that? If that helps.
It seems odd, "authorized in violation," so we should clean up some wording there. I would suggest them look at that, because it doesn't make sense to me. We're allowing them to violate-
Sit on the other one. It's on the other ones as well. I know you, Lee, Paduk.
I'm just, something to look at, that's for sure.
Also, as, go ahead.
The specific section you're citing is Section 7(c). If you read it in its entirety, it states, "The validity of the bonds authorized by this resolution and of any notes issued in anticipation of the sale of said bonds may be contested only if," c, "such obligations are authorized in violation of the provisions of the Constitution."
That makes sense. Yes, I vote, thank you.
Hopefully, that satisfies your concern. Okay? And as I was mentioning, this was something that we had moved on before, but the project itself had changed, and we were advised that we had to revise the resolution as it pertained to the current status. Okay, so, and this is a roll call vote? Number four. Fagion.
Yes.
Paduk.
Yes.
Emo. Anagostakis. Breschow. Cheney. Ellers. Hines. Luhon. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ryskevich. Sassi. Stiganga. Sutherland. Tui. Benelli. 17 ayes. Okay, number five.
Legislators Tui, Benton, Hines, and Paduk. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2022 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Public Works Environmental Facilities and Services pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Please call the roll. Fagion.
Yes.
Paduk.
Yes.
Emo. Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? Benelli? 17 ayes. Thank you. And this is number six, and this is a two-thirds vote, since it's a bond resolution. Legislators Menuda, Benton, Breschel, and Anagnostakis. Bond resolution dated July 7, 2022. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the acquisition of a front loader, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $140,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $140,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Questions or comments? Please call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagnostakis? Breschel? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? Benelli? 17 ayes. Okay, 7a is received and filed, and then we move on to number seven. Legislators Fagion, Stiganga, Benton, Cheney, and Breschel. Local law introductory number 6 of 2022. A local law amending Schedule A of Local Law Number 10 of 2018 and amending Schedule A of Local Law Number 4 of 2019 relating to the sale of certain county-owned real property residences on reservoir properties and authorizing the sale to other than the highest responsible bidder.
Second.
Questions or comments on this one? All right, then let's call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagnostakis? Breschel? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? Benelli? 17 ayes. Okay, moving on to number eight, please. Legislators Stiganga and Cheney, with legislator Luhan as a cosponsor. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Office of Assigned Counsel to appropriate fourth-year budget period funds from the New York State Office of Indigent Legal Services pursuant to Section 99-h of a general municipal law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, let's call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagnostakis? Breschel? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? And Benelli? 17 ayes. Okay, moving on to number nine, which will be a voice vote. Legislators Totell and Sutherland. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to appropriate fourth-year budget period funds from the New York State Department of Health for the tuberculosis prevention and control program pursuant to Section 99-h of a general municipal law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm going to go, "All in favor?"
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 10, which is also a voice vote. Legislators Luhan and Totell. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Department of Health for the performance incentive initiative award pursuant to Section 99-h of a general municipal law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, "All in favor?"
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 11. Legislators Fagion and Sutherland, with legislator Luhan as a cosponsor. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to accept and appropriate supplemental grant funds from the New York State Department of Health for the public health emergency preparedness program grant pursuant to Section 99-h of a general municipal law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Okay, this is a voice vote as well. Any comments or questions? All right, and "All in favor"?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried, and we move on to number 12. Legislators Luhan and Totell, legislator, I'm sorry, minority leader Paduk as a cosponsor. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Valley View Center for Nursing Care and Rehabilitation to accept and appropriate COVID-19 provider relief funds from the United States Department of Health and Human Services pursuant to Section 99-h of a general municipal law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
This is also a voice vote. Any questions or comments? I'll call the vote, "All in favor"?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried, and we move on to number 13. Legislators Luhan, Totell, Benton, Cheney, O'Donnell, with minority leader Paduk as a cosponsor. Bond resolution dated July 7, 2022. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the construction of improvements to the water treatment plant at Valley View Nursing Home, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $135,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $135,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
This is a two-thirds vote. Any questions or comments? Then I would ask that we call the roll, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagnostakis? Breschel? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? Benelli? 17 ayes. Number 14, which is also a two-thirds vote. Legislators Fagion, Totell, Benton, Anagnostakis, Breschel, and minority leader Paduk and legislator Luhan as cosponsors. Bond resolution dated July 7, 2022. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the upgrading of patient care mechanical lifters and replacement of equipment for Valley View Nursing Home, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $70,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $70,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagnostakis? Breschel? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? Benelli? 17 ayes. We move on to number 15, which again is a two-thirds vote, since it's a bond resolution. Legislators Totell, Luhan, Benton, and Hines, with minority leader Paduk as a cosponsor. Bond resolution dated July 7, 2022. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing residential room rehabilitation at Valley View Nursing Home, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $40,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $40,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Questions or comments? Please call the roll. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagnostakis? Breschel? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? Benelli? 17 ayes. All right, moving on to number 16, which will be a voice vote. Legislators Fagion and Sassy. Resolution authorizing the Orange County Executive on behalf of the Orange County Sheriff's Office to enter into an intermunicipal agreement between the County of Orange and the County of Sullivan pursuant to General Municipal Law Section 119. Oh.
Second.
Any questions or comments? "All in favor"?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Moving on to number 17. Legislators Tui and Totell, with legislator Luhan as a cosponsor. Resolution authorizing the Orange County Executive on behalf of the Orange County Department of Social Services to add additional funds to an agreement between the County of Orange and New York State Police.
Second.
Okay, this is a voice vote. Any questions or comments? "All in favor"?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. We move on to number 18, please. Legislator Sassy and Stiganga, with legislator Luhan as a cosponsor. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Office of Economic Development to submit an application to the New York State Empire State Development for the Strategic Planning and Feasibility Study Grant Program.
Second.
Questions or comments? This is also a voice vote, so "All in favor"?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 19, please. Legislator Sassy and Stiganga, with legislators Tui and Luhan as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2021 Orange County budget for the Office of Community Development to reconcile expenditures pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Here again, this is a voice vote, so "All in favor"?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried, and we move on to number 20, which is also a voice vote. Legislator Sassy and Stiganga, with legislators Tui and Luhan as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the Orange County Office of Community Development to adjust the 2022 entitlement budget pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? "All in favor"?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 21, here again, it's a voice vote. Legislator Sassy and Stiganga, with legislators Tui and Luhan as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the Orange County Office of Community Development to adjust the 2021 program income budget pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? "All in favor"?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number 22, and this is a voice vote as well. Legislator Menuda, with legislator Luhan as a cosponsor. Resolution providing for a public hearing upon the tentative budget for Orange County Community College for the fiscal year beginning September 1, 2022 pursuant to Section 6304 of the education law.
Second.
Any questions or comments? "All in favor"?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried, and we move on to number 23. Legislators Breschel, Menuda, Stiganga, Sassy, with legislator Luhan as a cosponsor. Resolution authorizing a contract to be made with the Orange County Community College Faculty Association pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, known as the Public Employees Fair Employment Act.
Second.
Questions or comments on this? Legislator Sassy?
Yes, just a quick comment. I want to publicly thank all those involved in bringing this to the table, from the county executive's office to our personnel committee, college personnel, and all the employees here. We truly do have an exceptional workforce in Orange County, and that includes all of our departments and the college as well. So it's a very fair, equitable contract, and I would urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? And I would like to recognize Paul Martlin, who's from the college, and we thank you for all your efforts and your presentation at E&amp;E this past week, or last month. Okay, without any further ado, roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagnostakis? Breschel? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? And Benelli? 17 ayes. Number 24, please. Legislators Breschel and Benton, an act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to abolish executive assistant and create confidential secretary to the Commissioner of Human Resources at the Orange County Department of Human Resources pursuant to Section 2.02i of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagnostakis? Breschel? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? Benelli? 17 ayes. Number 25, please. Legislators Menuda, Fagion, and Breschel. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to abolish Director of Facilities and create Assistant Director of Professional Services at the Orange County Department of Public Works pursuant to Section 202i of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? "All in favor"? No, I'm sorry, this is a roll call vote. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Anagnostakis? Breschel? Cheney? Ellers? Hines? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tui? Benelli? 17 ayes. Number 26, please. Legislators Fagion, Benton, and Stiganga. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create attorney for resources, CLE, and training, and create five interns seasonal at the Orange County Office of Assigned Counsel five interns seasonal at the Orange County Office of Assigned Counsel pursuant to Section 2.02i of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo, Anagnostakis, Bresch, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ryskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen i's. We move on to number twenty-seven, please.
Legislators Fagion, Menuda, and Stiganga, an act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create Chief Assistant County Attorney contracts at the Orange County Department of Law pursuant to Section 2.02i of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? I first of all would like to thank the new county attorney, Rick Golden, for bringing this to our attention, and we hope to see some expedited contracts, and we're not waiting for that because that was an issue, and the county attorney is addressing it forthwith, so I really appreciate that, and I think it'll be a great help.
Roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo, Anagnostakis, Bresch, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ryskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen i's. Number twenty-eight.
Legislators Fagion, Bresch, Luhan, and Totell, an act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to reallocate Supervisor of Administrative Support Services at the Orange County Department of Social Services pursuant to Section 2.02i of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo, Anagnostakis, Bresch, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ryskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Seventeen i's. Then we move on to number twenty-nine.
Legislators Fagion, Menuda, and Totell, an act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create Director of Regulatory Assistance at the Orange County Department of Health pursuant to Section 2.02i of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Legislator O'Donnell.
Thank you, Chairwoman. This is the position that used to be filled out of the county attorney's office. Is that correct? Rick?
This is the...
This is the position that we discussed at PNC that used to be out of your office. That's all I need.
There's an attorney now who has to provide legal advice to the Health Department. The Health Department is asking for a new position to be created given the regular criteria.
Correct. I just want to make sure that's the same exact position we're talking about. So, we're creating a new position in the Health Department that used to be covered by the county attorney's office, all right? So, I'm not in favor of this, especially because of, and Mike, I'll need your help with this, we need a game plan on a pandemic coming from the Health Department. That's where the money should be spent, not on creating new positions just to go over their contracts when the county attorney's office should do this. So, with the money being spent on non-county residents, at least we should spend money, investigate exactly what went wrong at Valley View and the other nursing homes, and spend the money, get a new game plan, so we don't make the same mistakes next time that Albany made under Governor Cuomo and Health Commissioner Zucker, sending sick residents back into the nursing home. If we don't look at that and find out how many lives we could have saved, shame on us going forward. We need a game plan. We need to know what happened back then, and I won't be supporting this or many of the Health Department's needs till they come to the Health Committee chaired by, who chairs that now? Legislature Tui. So, until that happens, I'll be a no on this. This is just a duplication of services. Thank you.
Legislator Emo.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm going to support this, and let me explain a little bit about it. I think that Mr. O'Donnell is correct in terms of needing to go back and look about what mistakes may have been made and how we could go forward, but we also have to think forward on this. We have to think about how we maintain and stay on top of all regulations, so anything like this doesn't happen again. I can tell you from my 25 years of experience in the Office of Mental Health as a Director of Quality Improvement, we did exactly that at the highest level. We took care of every regulatory issue that came from any part of the state to determine whether we, as a facility, were complying with the regulations and did something about it locally. Couldn't stand and wait for the Commissioner of Mental Health to tell us. We had to do it locally. I think we, doing it locally, is a good way to go.
Thank you, Legislator Emo. Anyone else? Legislator Menuda.
Just clarification, this is also including the PE positions, or is that separate? That's a different one than we did.
I'm sorry. That's the next resolution.
Thank you. So, I'm going to speak on it anyway. That's okay.
The next resolution?
No, well...
Or this resolution?
We're on twenty-one.
Please speak on this resolution.
We're on thirty?
No, we're on twenty-nine.
Thank you.
You good? Okay. Legislator Anagnostakis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was discussed, I think, alluding to what Mr. O'Donnell, Legislator O'Donnell, mentioned. This was discussed at the Health and Mental Health Committee, and I supported it then with the caveat that I'll support it on the floor, but he is correct. This is a duplication of service. So, this needs to be handled actually at budgetary time in the Personnel and Compensation Committee in terms of what the budget requirements in terms of positions are for the Law Department. If we do create this new position for the Health Department, that's fine. They will handle whether that old position needs to stay within law or not stay within law. That's the way I view it, and that's the way I'll pass the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Let's call the question on number twenty-nine. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo, Anagnostakis, Bresch, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ryskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Sixteen i's, one no. Moving on to actually the last agenda item, number thirty, please.
Legislators Bresch, Fagion, Luhan, with legislator Cheney as cosponsor, an act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create Deputy Commissioner of Health for Environmental Health at the Orange County Department of Health pursuant to Section 2.02i of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Legislator Menuda.
Thank you. I'd just like to request that the rest of the legislators vote affirmatively for this. This is going to assist the Environmental Health Department with the higher level of professional engineer to assist who's already there in moving things through the Health Department, and there's a lot of environmental issues that have come up over the years, and I will tell you that the current department's doing a fine job. This is just going to help expedite some more. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Legislator Menuda. Majority Leader Fagion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to commend Deputy Commissioner Erickson. He was present at the PNC meeting on Monday, July 20th, and as well on the Human Services Committee meeting on Tuesday, July 22nd, I'm sorry, 21st, and in both meetings, he discussed this position and the previous position, and the sales pitch that he put on me, and you know, I asked him, I said, as a conservative Republican, when I hear that there are new positions being formed, I have concerns for the taxpayers as well as the services that our county provides our citizens. And he said that both positions, both in twenty-eight, I'm sorry, in twenty-nine and thirty, will help the public, and they'll also make the department more streamlined. And his presentation, those meetings you can watch online, were very informative, and I ask all my colleagues here to support this resolution. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call the roll, please. Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo, Anagnostakis, Bresch, Cheney, Ellers, Hines, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ryskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tui, Benelli. Sixteen i's, one no. And the desk is clear, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. We do have some individuals that have joined us this afternoon for the public participation after our agenda items, and the first speaker, and I would remind the speakers that they do have three minutes to speak, please come forth to the microphone and be respectful of the time so that other colleagues may have the opportunity to speak in a timely fashion as well. Our first speaker is Joe Murtaugh.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, legislatures, other Orange County officials. Today, a group of citizens is gathered here to present a petition served on the New York State Attorney General, to present it into the county record regarding elections, joining other citizen groups around across New York State and recording the petition in their county legislature. We all claim our legislatures with these fact findings to gain our county legislature's support for the remedies in this petition. Election-concerned citizens from all over New York volunteered their time and partnered with the New York Citizens Audit to conduct the analysis of all publicly available election data. NYaudit.com is their website. Discrepancies have been found in the following: between official sources of data, in excess registration, in individuals with multiple State Board of Election identification numbers, in purged records with no purged date, in age with voters who could not possibly be alive, in ballots with blank addresses, and in findings that show the mathematical impossibilities according to replication analysis. Were you aware that New York State has 10,299 Lincoln voters, all born on January 1st, 1850, all on the voter rolls? Some of these voters were well enough to vote again in 2020. Were you aware that New York had 12,673 voters cast their 2021 ballots before early voting started? New problems appear with new voting processes. The petition we're presenting, we provided 21 copies for one for, I believe, each legislature to the county clerk, or to the, I'm sorry, to the clerk of the legislature.
Thank you.
So, the election rolls are a mess with large discrepancies in vote counts certified by the Secretary of State, the New York State Board of Election counts, and the New York precinct counts, multiple State Board of Election IDs per voter, and multiple mathematical anomalies and overvotes. This petition presents facts and/or in combination with other facts herein prove beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified. Some of the New York State election laws broken are 17-132, illegal voting, 17-136, false returns, 17-160, procuring fraudulent documents in order to vote. Violating these laws is a felony. Now, there's, we're also going to read into the record today many Orange County violations, and if I could, I hope you'll join with us, citizens, in support of this petition. Each of you, Orange County legislators, are influential citizens, and we are grateful for this forum, which to gain your support for the petition, to shine a light of truth and transparency on a demonstrably broken Orange County and New York State voting process.
Thank you, Mr. Murtaugh.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Christine McCormick, followed by Sheila Kern.
Good afternoon, thank you.
Good afternoon, you're welcome.
Appreciate it. I the understa, I'm sorry, I the undersigned do hereby state that I am a New York State citizen, and that I voted in the New York State general election on November 3rd, 2020, and that I remain a duly enrolled voter, registered in the voter rolls of New York State, and that my place of residence is truly stated opposite my signature here too. And I do hereby petition the following personnel for a written, meaningful response to this petition. Attorney General Letitia James, New York State Board of Elections Commissioners, Peter S. Kozinski, co-chair, Douglas A. Kellner, co-chair, Andrew J. Spano, Commissioner, Anthony J. Casal, Commissioner. This petition is for a redress of violations of the following provisions of the New York State election law. The agencies and individuals listed above are the authorities having jurisdiction for the following election law violations. Number one, 17-126, misconduct of election officers. Number two, 17-136, false returns on lawful acts. Three, 17-152, conspiracy to promote or prevent election. Four, 17-104, false registration. Five, 17-132, illegal voting. Six, 17-160, procuring fraudulent documents in order to vote. Seven, 17-170, destroying or delaying election. Eight, 17-150, duress and intimidation of voters. Nine, 17-168, crimes against the elective franchise not otherwise provided for. Ten, 17-124, failure to deliver official ballots. Eleven, 17-154, pernicious political activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Sheila Kern.
The factual evidence in support of this petition for redress includes the following facts. The official vote count for the 2020 general election certified by the Secretary of State, 8,69614, does not match the number of voters who voted in New York State voter rolls, which was 8,418179, nor does it match the number of votes from the New York State precincts, 8,627153, with a minimum discrepancy of 272,435 votes. Let me repeat that. With a minimum discrepancy of 272,435 votes, contrary to election laws 17-126 and 17-136, I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the other facts present herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified. These violations resulted in many races being certified where the discrepancies exceeded the margin of victory, contrary to election laws 17-126, 17-136, and 17-152. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the other facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified. The New York State Board of Elections in 2021, pursuant to a formal request, provided a copy of the voter rolls. Analysis by our team, led by a PhD, found 1,899,730 state registrations in nine counties, Bronx, Dutchess, Erie, Kings, Nassau, New York, Onondaga, Queens, and Richmond, that are missing from the voter rolls maintained by the corresponding county board of elections, contrary to election laws 17-126, 17-136, and 17-152. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the other facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified. Then I just want to repeat that number. They found that 1,899,730 state registrations in those nine counties were missing from the voter rolls maintained by the corresponding county board of elections. Thank you.
Sheila Kern. Ruth Chenoweth. And I apologize if I didn't say your last name correctly.
That's okay, thank you. Number four, voter rolls maintained by the New York City Board of Elections as well as Dutchess and Onondaga counties show 195,271 votes cast in the 2020 general election that are not recorded in the New York State Board of Elections voter rolls. And that's contrary to election laws 17-104, 126, 132, 136, 152, 160, 170, and 124, and it's in Exhibit D. I assert this fact alone and in combination with any of the other facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified. That's 195,000 votes that aren't registered. Number five, voter rolls maintained by the New York State Board of Elections shows 28,369 votes cast in the 2020 general election in Erie and Nassau County that are not recorded in the voter rolls, maintained by the corresponding county, contrary to election laws 104, 126, 132, 136, 152, 160, 170, and 124, in Exhibit E. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the other facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified. Six, New York State election law, Chapter 17, Article 5, Title 5, section 500, Paragraph 2, clearly states each voter shall be issued a registration serial number which shall be different for each voter. The data provided by New York State voter rolls clearly shows 608,757 unique State Board of Election identification numbers, assigned to only 299,920 unique voters. That means there's 65,759 of these numbers attached to 32,417 voters are not only an exact match with first name, last name, and date of birth, but also address. These facts are contrary to the election law stated, see Exhibit F. I assert that this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the other facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chenoweth. Elizabeth Woodcock, followed by Andre Stoff, I'm not going to try to say your last name. Elizabeth Woodcock.
Seven, at least 10,458 of these registrations, see six above, voted, allowing 5,229 unique voters to exceed one vote per person in the New York State 2020 general elections, contrary to election laws 17-104-126, 132, 160, see Exhibit G. I assert this fact alone and in combination with any of the other facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified. Voter rolls maintained in the New York State Board of Elections contain at least 1,488,224 purged voters with no purged date, of which at least 31,180 voted in the 2020 New York State general elections, contrary to election law 17-104 and 17-132 and/or 17-136, see Exhibit H. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the other facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified. Nine, six New York State counties had in excess of 100% voter registration during the 2020 general election, Allegheny, Erie, Hamilton, Nassau, Westchester, and Wyoming. And 51 additional counties had over-registration in certain age categories, resulting in at least 625,359 excess registrations, contrary to election law 17-104, see Exhibit I. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the other facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified. Ten, 27,638 voters registered after the deadline of October 9, 2020, yet voted in the New York State 2020 general election, contrary to election law 17-132, see Exhibit J. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the other facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified.
Thank you, Ms. Woodcock. Andre Stoffey. And again, I apologize if I didn't pronounce your name correctly.
Eleven, there were 620,610 blanks added or subtracted after the certification of the New York State 2020 general election, contrary to election laws 17-126, 17-136, and 17-170, see Exhibit K. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the other facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified. Twelve, New York State voter rolls contained at least 19,706 deceased voters, of which 1,284 voted in the New York State 2020 general election, and 10,289, of which were born on January 1st, 1850, contrary to election laws 17-104, 17-132, 17-136, and 17-150, see Exhibit I. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the other facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified. Thirteen, New York State 2020 general election contained in excess of 88,241 irregular votes, contrary to election laws 17-126 and 17-136, see Exhibit M. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the other facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified. Fourteen, analysis of the voter turnout in New York State 2020 general election using the Dr. Frank Age Turnout Method reveals a six-factor polynomial constant can predict the voter turnout by age with an average of 99.3% degree of accuracy. This demonstrates that the turnout records are not organic, contrary to our election laws 17-126 and 17-168, see Exhibit N. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the other facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified.
Thank you. Patricia Dos, followed by Karen Ambrosetti.
Number fifteen, the state and at least 14 counties have denied multiple FOIL requests for election records from the 2020 New York general election, contrary to election law 17-150. Number sixteen, the state and one or more counties have admitted to destroying various election records of the 2020 New York State general election in violation of the law, contrary to election law 17-150. contrary to election laws 17-152, see Exhibit O. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the other facts presented herein provides beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified. Seventeen, according to a sworn statement, a box of official New York State 2020 general election ballots were found unsealed and without chain of custody in an apartment building one or about November 8th, 2020, contrary to election law 17-124, 17-126, 17-152, 17-170, see Exhibit P. Eighteen, 14, I'm sorry, 44 candidates for the New York State Legislature in New York City and Westchester County, all representing the Democratic Party, were unopposed by the Republican Party, contrary to election laws 17-126, 17-152, 17-154, and 17-168, see Exhibit Q. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the other facts presented herein provides beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified.
Thank you, Ms. Dos. Karen Ambrosetti, followed by Michelle Kaiser.
Orange County facts. One, Orange County voter rolls maintained by the New York State Board of Elections demonstrate that 1,173 voter discrepancy exists between the Orange County precinct vote tabulation count, the New York State Board of Elections, and the 1,304 voting discrepancy exists between the Orange County precinct vote tabulation count and the New York Secretary of State certified results. Additionally, a 131 vote discrepancy exists between New York State Board of Elections and the Secretary of State regarding Orange County. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any other facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified in Orange County. Two, Orange County voter rolls maintained by the New York State Board of Elections demonstrate that there are 6,929 duplicates SBOEID numbers assigned, 106 of which voted. Petitioners claim each of these registrations and votes deprived petitioners of equal protections under the law. Three, Orange County voter rolls maintained by the New York State Board of Elections demonstrate that 88% of the voting age population of Orange County is registered to vote. The following age groups from 18 to 100 have an excess of 95% registrations. Ages 31, 32, 57, 59, 62, 63, 64, 65, 67, 68, 69, 70, and 73. The following age groups from 18 to 100 have an excess of 100% registration. Age 30 at 101%, 74 at 103%, and 100 at a 105%. Petitioners claim these registrations deprived petitioners of equal protection under the law. Four, Orange County voter rolls maintained by New York State Board of Elections demonstrate that 751 people registered after the cutoff date and voted on election day. Petitioners claim these votes deprived petitioners of equal protections under the law. Five, Orange County voter rolls maintained by New York State Board of Elections demonstrate that two people voted who are recorded in the voter rolls as deceased. Petitioners claim these votes deprived petitioners of equal protection under the law.
Thank you. Karen, Michelle Kaiser.
Thank you. Six, Orange County voter rolls maintained by the New York State Board of Elections demonstrate that 488 people voted from eight small homes. 119 people voted from two schools. 118 people voted from two trailer park addresses. And 645 people voted from apartment buildings with no apartment numbers. Petitioners claim that these votes may have deprived petitioners of equal protections under the law. Seven, Orange County voter rolls maintained by the New York State Board of Elections demonstrate that six voters were purged from the rolls prior to November 3rd, 2020, but voted anyway. Petitioners claim that these votes deprived petitioners of equal protections under the law. Eight, the total number of irregular votes in Orange County as detailed above is 3,539 votes. Nine, analysis of the voter turnout in Orange County using the Dr. Frank Age Turnout Method reveals a six-factor polynomial constant can predict the voter turnout by age with a 99.9% degree of accuracy. This demonstrates that the turnout records are not organic. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified in Orange County. According to the New York, sorry, ten, according to the New York Secretary of State on December 8, 2020, Orange County subtracted 33,153 blank votes from the previously certified total. On June 18, 2021, Orange County added 36,584 blanks to the previously certified total. I assert this fact alone and/or in combination with any of the facts presented herein proves beyond a reasonable doubt that the 2020 general election was defective and must be decertified in Orange County. Those petitions are hereby requested to provide a meaningful response by refuting each of said facts or complying with relief specified in paragraphs one, two, and three below. One, decertify the New York State 2020 general election. Two, full forensic audit of the November 3rd, 2020, New York State general election for a complete investigation of the effort made to subvert the will of the people. Three, criminal and financial penalties and enforcement of those officials involved. Should the recipients hereby petition not publicly respond to the petition within 30 days of service by granting the relief requested, such violation of their constitutional duty would add credence to the belief held by the petitioner that a government that first violates the rule of law and then fails to honor its obligation to respond to the petition for redress of the violations is unrecognizable. Just like, one minute. That is, it is not the government people instituted. Consequently, petitioner questions why he/she should continue to fund a government that has stepped outside the boundaries drawn around its power by the terms of state constitution and laws pursuant thereto, upon failure to respond accordingly or provide the remedies requested within 30 days, May 9, 2020.
Ms. Kaiser, your time is up, but I believe that all of the information that all of you have presented thus far are in the documents that were presented to the clerk in our downstairs in her house. Is that correct?
Yes. Thank you for your time.
And the last speaker, I believe, to sum up is Howard Bellingham or Bowlingham? I'm not too sure.
Bowlingham.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. Just finishing up the last of the script. In conclusion, thank you for taking the time to listen to each violation of the law that was found in Orange County, New York. Based on all of the findings, we are calling for the decertification of the entire New York State 2020 general election, which includes a minimum of 89 improperly certified legislative races. Citizens of Orange County as well as New York demand as a remedy to voter fraud not only that a full forensic audit is ordered and takes place for discovery, but also a criminal investigation for each individual who committed voter fraud. The most fundamental principle defining credible elections is that they must reflect the free expression of the will of the people. To achieve this, elections should be transparent, inclusive, and accountable, and there must be equitable opportunities to compete in elections. You have the power to achieve this on behalf of all of your Orange County, New York constituents and citizens of New York. I was asked last minute to sub in here and finish this off because they needed an extra body, and I'm glad I was because I got to hear the quote, "This is the best we have the ability to do." As you pass your ridiculous gas tax break, whatever that is, where 14 of you pass it, you have no idea what the actual effect on Orange County is going to be. I'm glad that's the best you have the ability to do. As legislators, we demand more out of you. We expect better out of you. Besides your virtue signaling, I'm sure you were expecting an empty room here today to give this presentation, probably not expecting anyone to hear that. And yet, here we were for something completely unrelated. It gives us all a pretty good insight into how Orange County politics works. We expect better out of all of you. The people expect better out of all of you. We hope you can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes, that concludes our public participation. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion. Do I have a second? Luhon, second. Thank you. Have a great evening, everybody.